Alright, this is day 2 of the Nihongo sobatome series. I'll be coming here every day, trying to do this. So I look forward to anybody who joins in. Start to create a schedule at some point, but right now, the goal is to hop in at least at some point every day. So that's what I'm doing. I'm here, so let's get started. Alright, so today, I'll start off with grammar. So I went back, and you can see now there's these red. You can see the red text that I was talking about in yesterday's video. There we go. So now, there's this cool little red sheet that they use in all the Japanese books. And so if you do your work in red, it disappears and it's no longer there. So it's pretty helpful. It's, I don't know, it's pretty cool in my opinion. And it really helps if you need to go back and study. So you just grab the sheet and you put it over it, and then you ask yourselves the question, and then, you know, like this one. You know, you have... "えが" "えが" "わ" "あの世界中" And then was it "はなせるでいます?" or "はなられてます?" And then, you know, I can say like, "Oh, it's a..." Boom, a... So, pretty nice. And I can go through and do all of these. And I think there were a couple things that I got wrong last time. And so I just kinda wanna set the record straight, actually. Somebody using Mitorii, which, uh... Take it updated. So let's see. Someone search. So I think we got this one wrong, "考えさせて" So if we do... "考える" And we look at the conjugations. Did I do this awesome? I can't remember anyways. You can see that it would turn into "せど" So at that point, then the best way would be "させ考える" "考えさせて" So "考えする" So That's why it was that instead of "あの指す" "せて" And then... Let's see, ah, right, "オリンピック" So we had "オリンピック", and then "わ" "四年" Number 4. "あの に一度 あの開かれます" Alright, so 3, 4, 2, 1, so 3, 4, 2, 1. And so the "に" introduces the "一度" So "一度開かれます" Doesn't need a particle in between, so that's where I messed up. I thought "に" had to be before "開く" And that was not the case. And then So, you know, "印象 So I did ask, like, "Why can't it not be 'インタビュー' or "印象インタビューについて" And I was just told, "It's just not, like, the '印象' is the important part." And so You know, the... So the impression, so the Japanese impression concerning the Japanese impression. Like, can we have an interview about the Japanese impression? So Yeah, I got that wrong. That's the correct order. And that's kinda what they informed me about that. So So now, we're on day 2. So あの出せないと" So, oh! It got dirty. I have to send it to the cleaners. And then just put it there. I'll do it tomorrow. So these are the grammar points to learn today. Then Let's see. We have the kanji. For making flashcards, I kinda went and made them a little bit ahead of time to show off this feature that you can use to import grammar points. I haven't actually tested this, so this can go wrong, but it should work. So if I pull these out, I'm using Notion to kinda do some doc... Documents, notes. But I'll select all in this code block. Copy. And then if I put them here... As long as I remain consistent. So the first line is the grammar point, which is the title here. The second one is the information here. And then an example sentence that I just took randomly from each of these. And then the English. And then I got some page numbers in there that reference the grammar book that I had talked about last time. This handbook for Japanese grammar patterns. So let's see if this works, but if I hit "import", yeah, you'll see, so it made 3 sticky notes. So each of these will be a 4-note sticky note. And so if I hit "OK", oh, I think I put them in the wrong. I think I put them in the wrong. Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Okay. So let's see where they... Put it into... Yeah, I don't... I don't actually see them. Right? I do not see them. Huh. Wonder what it... Anyways. So we'll go to "Bimpo" "Settings", "Import" "Do Paste" There's also the button up there. "Import" Did I hit "Cancel" by accident? That'd be pretty good if I did. Okay. As you can see, it turned these. So it has the sentence. It has the automatic talking. And then Yeah, the shortened form of "ないといけない" And then we got some information on the other grammar book. Okay, so those are those. I think it was in there, I just... I couldn't see it. Maybe not. Maybe I hit the... Oh, there they are. I see them. Oh, wait. So for this, I think we... I think we want to delete. Go in and delete it. If you delete it from the list, I think it just, it keeps it in the dictionary. But let's see if it removed it from the other list. Testing with you guys. No, we look like we're good. Awesome. Okay. Alright, so let's go into this. So "もう寝ないと" "もう寝ないと" So "もう" "Sleep" "I must go to bed now, since I will go early tomorrow morning." Okay? So "ない" to, it can be verb "ない" to, or it can be verb "なくちゃ" Okay, so it looks like this one has a heart. And I don't know what the heart is, but I have an assumption. Let's see. Yeah, so here it is. "ダメ" is "Don't do" "で" is an example. Phrase. " attentionしましょう" "もっと" Lots of different ways to use this word. Then example to the pages. You can also write it this way. The speech bubble is "会話でよく使われる あの日を" So like, spoken speech. Now it's written. Written word. So, not a good use of it. And then So the heart is, means that it's spoken that way for feminine speakers. So, that's pretty good. I don't know. So I will not use "なくちゃ" Because that's not, I don't wanna sound feminine. But be mindful of that. Because it really does come across. I think most of the time when I speak Japanese, I sound feminine because most of my learning were from women. But very helpful. So let's see. Let's go down this list. "試験まであと 1ヶ月だ" "There's only 1 month to go before the exam. I must concentrate on my study." Okay. "勉強しないと" So it's starting to, it's really starting to feel like it's something like convey, like an expression, like an exclamation point. I also just noticed that all of these have the speech bubble. So that means all of these are used in spoken and not written. Okay, the next one. So I think I had a little bit of a example here. Let's see. What did we say it was? 401? I think it's "しまおう" Oh, I had a bookmark there. "ない" to "ない" "Can't pass with average score of 70 above" So "Heiki" There's not a lot at the end. Right? Ah, but the whole thing is there. Yeah, so there we go, okay. Adjective "くない" to and then verb "ない" to. So "急がないと 迅速するよ" Hurry up! You'll be late! Okay. "Whenない" to is combined with an expression in sentence final position, that conveys a negative evaluation, such as... I can't read that. Or "難しい" To be difficult. "It means that something unfavorable will happen if a certain situation or state of affairs is not realized. Often used when the speaker wants to urge, encourage, or advise the listener to do the action expressed in the "ない" to clause." Okay, so now that knowing that, if we go back over to this... Yeah, see, like this one. "Tanaka san ni email" or "メール" no "あの返事" を "あのしなく" "しなくちゃ" "しなくちゃ" I don't know. If you know, let me know in the comments. "しなくちゃ" I'll ask my friends about that one. So, but I must respond to Tanaka's message. So there's that urge, that encouragement, that advise to the listener. Letting, so it's not something... I mean, maybe it can be inner monologue. I don't know if you're the listener. But it doesn't say that, but it seems like this is conveyed to somebody. Alright, I think that one kinda makes sense. Like, when I'm not prepared... It's like, yeah. Yeah. "このレッスンの勉強しないと" Like, I need to study for today's lesson. Okay, let's see. "食べちゃった" So this is like a "しまおう" Like "しまいました" Like, just happened, I believe. "あ、食べちゃった" "いけないから" Okay. "食べてしまった" "Oh, what happened to the chocolate which was here?" "Oh, I ate it. I shouldn't have." "いけなかった" 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 Alright, that's funny. "試験が終わった" "Oh, the drink is over. I'm gonna have a drink." And then "もしもし、すみません" "Hello, the traffic is bad" "I'll be a little late" "車が混んじゃった" Alright, so this one. Verb "で" So, verb "で" "ちゃった" So it doesn't use the "て" Right? "食べて" It turns into "食べちゃった" So no need to put the "て" But we've put "ちゃった" And then if it would be "で" Like " non de" Which is "で" versus "て" Depending on how the verb conjugates. So verb "ちゃった" Okay. So "nonじゃった" "飲んじゃおう" "じゃおう" Because it's like, it's going to drink. But if I did drink, then it would be "飲んじゃった" Or "食べちゃった" So "してしまおう" "あのしちゃっ" "ちゃっ" "ちゃおう" "あの来てしまおう" "あの来ちゃった" "あの帰ってしまおう" "帰っちゃった" And then "死んでしまう" "あの死んじゃった" So it always removes the "て" form. So, but depending on if it's "て" or "で" Ending in "て" or "で", then it's always "ちゃっ" "ちゃおう" Alright. And then lastly, we have the "解読" 間違い" "間違った ところを脳頭に 解読" "こう" "I will make the note of what I did wrong" Okay. Let's see. Set up a little bit. Alright. "これ Can you wash this? "解とかない" "かとかないと" We're running out of toilet pa... Oh, I missed the first. Alright. かとかないと" So we're almost out of toilet paper. We'll have to buy some more. Okay? So this looks like it also uses "て" form, and it removes the "て" from it. And if it's a "で", then it goes "とく" So "て" turns to "おく" So, or "とく" So "でおく" turns into "でとく" Sorry, wait. No, just turns into "とく" Okay, and then "おかない" So "don't" "行かない" Ah, like "行けば" "ならない" Okay. So "とかない" Okay. So they, so hit some examples. "しておきます" "しておきます" Okay, so that can also be used formally. "見ておいた" "見といた" "読んでおきます" "読んでおきます" And then "飲んでおいて" And that one turns into "飲んどいて" Okay. So this one, I think I get it. It's "おき" "ます" So like here, do it here. But there is, I think I did 265. Put that in there. 265 in the grammar book. What's that? So... Yeah, and I mean, I, you know, just to prepare, so I'm not looking for it while I'm studying. I I go and just find it, but I don't really study it, so you're kinda getting me fresh here. Some of them I know, but... This is, you know, this is a new one for me, so... I mean, I remember "おきます" "ておく" So "このワインの So, put it... "It's best to drink wine" Oh, it says here, but I'm gonna go from my head here. "It's best to drink wine" Cold. So When you're gonna drink, put it, like, before you drink, put it in the refrigerator and set it there. So this is wine's better chilled. So let me, so let's keep it in the refrigerator until we're ready to drink it. Yeah. So "帰る時 So please leave the window open when you leave. So yeah, it's like, leave it where it is. Or keep it as it is. So how does that apply here? So I will make a note of it, of what I did wrong on the test. Can you wash this? Well, let's read what it says. Because it's still not exactly clean, or clear to me. So "ておく" has the meaning of taking an action and maintaining the situation which has come about as a result of the action. Depending on the context, it can mean either a temporary measure or preparation for the future. "てある" also expresses preparation for the future. Apart from structural difference, "ておく" differs from "てある" In the former expression, that the preparation has to take place, while the latter expresses that the preparation has already been done. In spoken language, "ておく" becomes "とく" So let us kind of explain that, so... And then in examples like "I'll let mom know" "ビール "Please chill the beer ahead of time" "開し" that was what we studied yesterday. I'm proud that I remembered that. I didn't know that word till yesterday. Alright. Okay, cool. I think that's a little more clear. Man, I realized, I'm like popping out of there. Okay. So, let's see here. Okay, I think I get it. So these are all the grammar points for today. Let's see if I do get it. So I got my red pen here. And Let's see. Okay. "あ、バス 行かないと" "行っちゃった" "ちゃった" So "いけないと" It didn't come. Use it that way? No. "ちゃった" But "ちゃった" means... Ah, it just came. So I think it's, I think it's that. Alright. "パソコン 解す" Turn off the password. "まだ使うから 解しちゃって ついて" "ついて" So, we're talking about leaving it as it is, right? Like, that's what it was saying, so I think it's "be" Like, that's, that's what it was saying, so I think it's B. Um, so, ah, tushoukan no hon. Ah, tushoukan no hon. Ano kaisai tsunai to. Kashi nai to. Uf. Kasanai to. Kasanai to. So it's always nai. Kashi shon Yeah. So it's nai. Neri nai. Oh, man. I kinda, I always get tripped up onto this. I think it's nai. Um, because we could ka- kaisuru kashi nai. Well, we'll see, and if uh, I get that wrong, then um, it's good, because it all the examples here, unfortunately, it was with an the do and she, because this one, yeah, 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 no, because it was suru. Shi, binkyo suru, binkyo shimasu. Binkyo shinaito, it's not binkyo sa- sanai. Sanai to, yeah, so, it should be good here. Okay, kore uh, to- to- to kore, ano laishu made ni ano yon jatta. Yon doite. Kore, laishu made ni yon jatta. So yon jatta. Yon doite. So I, I think, hmm. I think it's, you have to read till the end. So let's try that. Uh, ah, ameni ano fu- fu chatta. Fu ra- ra de chatta, fu ra de chatta. So I think it's chatta. Whoa, is my pen already going out? I just got it. Come on. Ano okinai to. Okinai to. Ne chatta. Okinai to. So waking up. Hmm. Okinai to. Okinai to omota ni okinai to made omota, so I think okinai to made Oh, man. And I, I really suck at these, okay, um, hmm. Let's see. Okinai to. So it's like, I'm continuing to wake up. Okinai to omota kara, oi, omota to Man, hmm. Wow, okay, this one's hard for me. Um, and it's because I'm like, not understanding previous ones, so like, okinai to thing is, they didn't like, use any okinai, so ka- nai to, noni? Noni? Made, oh. Mada omota to ne chatta. Ah, I think it's made okinai to made okinai to made omota to noni? Oh, man. The to is messing me up, I don't know where to use the to, hmm. Noni? Yo, mada noni? To omota, ah, ah, to omota. Ah, 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 okay, 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 okay. Right, okay, let's see here. Oh, man, sorry, that shaky enough. Crazy. Okay, um, ano okinai to um okinai to made to omota noni okinai to made to omota noni, so I thought, I thought I woke up. I thought I was done waking up, but I, I slept. I don't know, I understand what it's trying to say, but I mean, I don't, it's, yeah, it's a little difficult. Okay, um, asa- asa hayai, asa hayaku okite na 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 na, ano kichatta. Asa hayaku okite o- bento o ano tsukata ita ano oite ano iei ni to otsukuta to ita oku wa iei Oh, wow, yeah. Hmm. I tell you, like, this, this is where it gets disheartening. Because it's like I don't even know where, where I'm going. Alright, um. O bento otsukata ta oite ano, ano iei ni o bento otsukaito ta oite kichatta. Three. Three, two. O bento tsukata kichatta. Kichat- man, I don't know what it's trying to say, actually. Yeah, so, um, this is where I come into problems when I'm still studying. It's like, man, I really kind of don't understand, um. I remember oite comes there. So let's see, okay, BBA BB. So BB A BB. Wow. Ah, so, remember this is that one, where I said that, uh, it looked like it was right because of all of this, right? See, this is where this book is not very good. I guess, like, it didn't, it didn't really explain that, like right? I guess I should have known, because it's nakereba naranai. Um, and, and so ne- neda nakereba naranai, so that one always needs the, the na. So that's what, that's where I should have understood that, but, okay, so it is sasanai. But you see, like, they could have put one that would match that, right? And it'd make it a lot easier, but no, they don't, and so, yeah, I messed it up. Okay, uh, BBA BB, so I also messed up this one. What did I do wrong here? Uh, ameni fu chatta. Fu ra de chatta. Non jatta. Kon jatta. Tabe chatta, I think I did it again, right? Kaiwa teki shimatta shimaou. So, non non de shimaou, ah, so fu ra de chatta, fu ra de fu ra de fu ra ah, fu ra de chatta, okay, that's one. It's not futte, it's fu ra de fu ra de Okay, um, let's see the next one, two, three, one, four. Two, three, one, four, ah, kinda. So, so it definitely was to omota, like, I remember that, like, whenever we say, I think, like, to omota, so I got that, and then one, noni, I knew that it was like, noni, like, uh, I did this. I did this, like, this thing. Um, so okinai to, uh, ah, and I knew it was gonna be one of these ones, like, to to. So to to, right, two. Two, I knew it. That inkling was there in the back of my head. Three, one, and then four. Mada ne chatta, so I had to wake up, I thought, but I slept. Okay, and then this one is two, one, four, three. Two, one, four, three, so clearly, I, I don't understand this one at all, um. Two, one, four, three. Two, one, four, three. Asa, okay, um. Asa hayaku okite ano tsukata ita tsuk- tsuku- tsuku to ita ta o bento iei ni oite, what? Two. Two, one, four, three. Oh, man, I really just don't understand this one at whatsoever, so. Hayaku okite. So like, hurry up and wake up. Tsukata ita. It's, oh, I need to make something. O bento o iei ni oite kichatta. What? Tsuku toki tsuku tsuku toita, tsukata ita o bento o iei ni oite kichatta. Wow. Yep, that one, I'll need to ask, it's really tsuku toita, so I need to make it, right? Toita, it's this, it's this thing, right? Hayaku okite tsukita Okay, I need to make something, like, right away when I wake up. O bento o bento iei ni oite kichatta. Yeah, it's that placement, right? That's pretty hard. Man. So at bento o I had to wake up and we could probably make something, o bento Maybe the thing that's messing me up is like, he, he's saying that he left, uh, saying they left their bento? What the hell? Alright, if you know, leave a comment and uh, let me know, um, I will need to come back to that one. Um, so I'll probably, I'll have an update for you tomorrow on that, for what I learned. Um, we'll go on to the next session. Alright, so vocabulary, um. Vocabulary diyo, shimaou, shimashou, shimaou. Shimashou. Shimashou. Okay, one, one thing I learned today when I was looking at this, because I, I made the vocabulary list earlier, and um, Okay, one, one thing I learned today when I was looking at this, because I I made the vocabulary list earlier and um. The one thing I noticed is. This is like an example of how everything is used. So this one's looking at a um. A recipe for four people and then how um. How all the ingredients are and then how it's prepared. Um, so this section. Um, and this section will include all the words that need to be learned. Um. So. Uh, tablespoon is osagi. Uh, teaspoon is uh kosagi. And then one cup. Uh, niyaku sisi. Um, and then you can see sisi, uh. One. Di. Rida. Ru. Rida ru. So one liter. Um, which doesn't explain. So I guess it expects, like, everybody knows that. Um, and then houchou. Houchou kitchen knife. Um, and then manaita is the cutting board, uh, which is interesting because I I I didn't know those and that's really good to know. Um, and then hakari as a scale. Um, and then hyaku garamu. So if you want to explain grams. Um. And then the sentence, uh, the words used in action. Um. Is a yushoku. Which is evening and then no okazu. So dish for um the uh this evening. And then. Yee. Yeyo no. Balance. Oh. Ano kangaeru. Think about the nutritional balance. So eyo. Peiyo is eyo no balance. Uh, nutritional balance. Um, karri ga ano takai ano shokuin. So high calorie food. Uh, hakari de. Ha- hakaru. Hakari de hakaru. So the way. The weight on the scale, okay. Um. And then uh shi. Uh, shio o. Uh, yo sho. Uh, ire- ireru. So lightly salted, but shoshou, shoshou. Seems like, you know, a little salt bay right there. Get that in there? Shoshou, although I guess I don't know if he's lightly salting anything. Um. And then chomiro, uh, seasoning. Chomiro. And then rice wine sake. Um. So alcohol sake is always the same. Uh, soup vinegar, uh, salad yu. Salad oil, tempura, abura. Um. So abura and yu can also, can both be used. Abura is oil. Um, I mean, yu is oil, but I I think it's not as heavy oil. It's more, you know, it's like salad dressing, basically. Um, that's a lot different than like oil, like thick oil that you cook with, um, which is abura. Um, and then, let's see. Uh. Kawa o ano muku. So to peel the skin. Um, it doesn't say skin, but that's what kawa is. Um. Uh, sairyo o ano. Ki- kizamu. Uh, chop the ingredients. Um. And then okime ni ano kireru. Or kuru. Uh, cut into big pieces. Uh, sanzenchi. Ha ha ni. Uh, kuru. So cut into uh three centimeter pieces. But what is? Oh, haba. Uh, haba ni kireru. Uh, so pieces is haba, haba. Um, I believe. And then. Misou shi- shiru. Ga meru, uh, nuru- nuru- kunaru. So the miso soup is lukwam. Nuru- kunaru. Nuru- kunaru. I like uh mizu. Mizu ga nuru- kunaru. Um, and then da- dapu. Uh, dapu. So wrapping. Uh, dapu kabusere. Uh, kakiru. So cover, kabusere, wrap in plastic. Um. Rapu de ano kurume. Kurume. Wrap in plastic. Oh, I guess that one's rap. Kurume is wrap. And. Kakiru and kabusere is to cover. Okay. Let's take a stab. I'll take a stab at it. It's probably too early, but I just read them, so. Um. A, uh, one cup. Uh, B, one liter. Do. Liter. So hai ri no biru o. Kaou. So. I'm gonna say. Beer, because it's talking. Just talking about a beer. Cup of beer. I like a liter. Forty, forty, forty ounce, I don't know. Alright, um, zairyo. Oh. Hakari. Uh, dapu. So dapu de uh hakari mashou. Hakari. Hmm? Failed. I don't know what hakari is. I also don't know what zai- zaidyo. Zaidyo is. Ah, ingredients, right. Did it say zaidyo? Oh, I didn't see there. Zaidyo no. Hakari. Dapu. Oh. What's that? Okay, I think I remembered this in scale. So the kanji. So it's ha- hakari. Oh, man, what the? Does this really get that dry that fast? It's crazy. I could just spot this pen. Okay. Um. Yo no. Uh, balance. Yep. I already know that that's a rose. Uh. Oh, kangaemashou. So think about um the nutritional balance. Um. Zai- zaidyo. O. Uh, ichi garamu. Ichisenchi. Uh, haba ni, haba ni. Ha- haba, ha. Uh, haba, haba. Haba. Itte. Okimashou. So cutting ingredients, yeah, one senchi. Um. Houchou de. Uh, zaidyo. See, zaidyo, I'm really learning here. No. Okazu. Uh, tama negi. Oh. Kizu. Kizumu. Okazu. This one, I don't know. Tama negi is onion. Okazu, I don't know. So shio o. Shoshou. Or kumaku. Iretekudasai. So shoshou to. Salt bay. I remember. Because I could use salt bay. To learn, to learn my Japanese. Uh, alright. Um, kawa. Kawa. Irenai hoga iide. Uh, ki- kirei ni. Muite. Uh, kite. Kabusete. Uh, ki- kizan de. Oi. Hinei. Ah. Muite. Because you gotta peel, right? Mu- mukimasu, mukimasu. Um. Niku o. Uh, dapu. De. Hyashi. Hinete. Kurunde. Uh, ha. Katte. Katte. That is the. Katte. I think it's hi- hinete. Oh, I just looked up. It's not, it's three. Damn it. Okay. Let's see, so B A A B B A. B A A. B. Oh, it's tama negi. What is this thing? Ki- kisamu. Kisamu? Ah, kisamu, chop. Chop the onion. Okay. And then one, three. Yeah. Well, I said that. Kurunde. Okay, well, you know, normally I shouldn't. I mean, this is just going after right away. So this, this one is a, is a prime example of, of how I would um. Study with this sheet, so. What I will do. Is I'll, I'll go. Into the vocabulary. And I didn't add it yet, so. If I go. Yes. Vocabulary. And then here we will uh import it. Um, making these lists took me about like fifteen minutes, I think. Um, but it, it, it's a little faster because you can just type each word into like a text document or something, something that you can access in the app. Um. And then you can just paste it in, uh, or you can like airdrop it to yourself, um. Or if you're on a PC, there's a. There's a website called snapdrop.net. Um, and you can just paste it into your phone and then paste it into the app. And then if you do the list, then you can see here. All of them to get added. So you can see. Hakari. Okazu. Hakari. I had a duplicate. Muku. Kuruma, kuruma. So you can see some of these didn't. Didn't copy over. Um, but they're pretty easy to tell. Kurume. Kurume. So wrap. Uh, I might check it. Yeah, see, it has it. I guess because I didn't put the kanji. So I'll add, I'll add it that way. And then.
Kurume.
Go in here and delete it. It's not perfect. Muku. So muku, I'm sure it's the same. Just. Where did I go? Oh, muku peel. Yep, right here.
Ku. Ku. Ku.
Hakari. See, it knows it here.
Hakari. Hakari.
Oh, wait. That's not the right kanji, right? Oh, but it doesn't, in the book, it doesn't use a kanji, right? Yeah, scale. Okay. Like, yeah, sometimes it's just a little silly. I don't know. I don't know why does that, um.
Hakari.
Okazu. Dish. Oh, I'm complaining now. Ugh. Terrible. Uh, I don't know. Uh. Hmm, so this one.
Kazu. Kazu. Okazu.
I'll go with this one because it has an example. Uh, but I can also ask about that later.
Kazu.
You know, this is the problem when you. Self-study, right? Like.
Kazu.
Get to ask people later or get on a forum and ask. Okay, so I have all the words. So I mean, you could see that we ramp up pretty quick here, right? Like, we're already at seventy-four words. Um. These words, I'm still kind of studying. The red is all new. Um, but now I'll just go through these. Um, and you know, like when I walk the dog or go to the bathroom or, um. You know, I get a free moment at work, I'll just go through these. Um, I will try to represent that time. Um. By looking at how long I've used the app each day over the week. Um, so I can. Kind of have an understanding, like already like these lessons. Um. You know, we're, we're at an hour right now. Um, totally hit that mic. Um. But uh. It will uh. You know, like, it will add time preparation, like, I think preparation for today was about a half hour and then. Um. Some of that, like, you know, uh, you won't be preparing for. I'm preparing because I'm trying to make these videos like a little quick, uh, so I take the burden of the thirty minutes, um. Yeah, maybe, maybe you would still need to do that, but uh. Yeah, it's important to factor in all this time because you definitely get study creep. Um, and I'm not very, I'm not a very good fast learner. My mnemonics are kind of not all, all that well. Uh, so. Uh, you know, this. I'm gonna feel the pain, I think. Um. I already like hit the, the kanji issue, like, which I'll, I'll kind of go over next, um. With the kanji, I, I realized if I don't study writing it first. Um, man, it's really hard to, to kind of retain it when I do the, the flashcards. Uh, so you'll see, like. We're going to the kanji, like I did some of the, the flashcards and I've added uh today's in here as well. Um, but you can see like my progress is not very good, um, because like. Each word I don't really remember because I didn't really write it down and, and kind of engrain it. And so, um, you know, I picked up a. I picked up one of these, uh, just a graph. Uh, in Japan, you can find uh kanji paper uh to practice on. It's. It's kind of demeaning because it's like for, like, I don't know, kid. it's kinda demeaning, cause it's like for, like, I don't know, kindergarten kids, and so the paper's really big, but it's really good starting out, um, but, uh, if you don't have that available, you can use any graph paper and kind of make your own style. What I, what I usually do is I try to make it like within this square. Um, and I used to, I used to try to leave a blank in between. Um, but i- i- it just gets kinda confusing, so you can see here, like I, I, like if I do this one. And then it, you know, we got the flower, or the grass, and then enclosure, the mountain. And then if I do another one. I don't know, just, to me, it just doesn't, it doesn't work. Doesn't look good. And you get more, right? Like you're cutting out how many lines you have, so, uh, uh, you know, how, whatever works for you. Um, is, is how we should do it. Uh, but this time, I will do it, and, and one thing I think I brought up um, yesterday is that when you do this book, the kanji, they don't really explain it. Um, actually, this one, it tells you the stroke order, this amount of strokes, but it actually doesn't even show you the stroke order. So getting an app like Sticky Study is really important. Um, for those who don't know, this, this app is called Sticky Study. Um, and then, you know, you can, so let's see, let's, um, so this one's, oh. Let's see if we can find it here. Where is? And so you can, like, yeah, if you, oh. If you look at it here, it animates, and you can see what the line is, but if you wanna do some practice, you can just do it that way. Um, another way I was thinking of doing, but I didn't do it this time, is, um. See, it's important to know and learn your stroke order. Um. One thing I was thinking of doing next time is, like, I think I showed yesterday, when you, when you make these, to put, um, you know, click on it and then put the words, but now I'm, uh, I'm doing them all on the computer, like creating that list, just like I did with the vocabulary, and then importing them in. Uh, that was a lot faster. Um, I'm, might try to do two different things, like put all the kanji, uh, for the lesson in, and then all the words, and see if it formats it in a way so that I can focus on the kanji writing first. That way, for each one, like, all of the first ones that it shows me are the kanji, and then I can click on each one and then practice, you know, writing it with my finger, or, you know, on my iPad, I can use a stylus. Um. Instead using this, cause sometimes paper, I don't know, I'm trying to go digital, right? Um, but paper's really good too, and it, it's good because you're gonna be filling out forms, so you definitely have to learn how to write. Um, so the finger, I think, is kind of bad habit, which is what I usually use. Um, cause you don't build that muscle memory. Um, but, um. Yeah, so if that doesn't work, then what I'll do is I'll just do the kanji, and then, uh, like I'll create the list. Kanji first, words second, import the kanji, go through that till they're all green, and then put in the words, and then start practicing the words, so that way, when I see them, I kinda, I kinda learn the meaning and then go through it, but, you know, for today, I'm just gonna do it the old-fashioned way, so like, this one. Um, sideways, so, might write sideways. Yes. And then, I'll, I'm, I've just been putting the onyumi. Um. I guess you can put both, but sometimes there's a lot, so I'm not, I'm just more concerned about learning the writing here. Um, so if I look here, you know, like this one, I might go, okay, so I make the tree. Pretty straightforward. And then, and then I make the flowers. Little grass flower bed, and then the rice. But you see, the rice goes here, and then down, and then cross across, and then you can see, I kinda messed up there, so I'm just gonna take the loss there. Um, I mean, I do have my erasable pen, which is really nice, um, so I can make it up here. Um. Oh, see, I already forgot what it is, and I'm not gonna look at it, oh, the, the rice field, right? And then the line down, and then up, and then the little fins. Um, and then, like, the names that I have for these are kinda come from the, um, radicals, um. If you learn the radical names, uh, some of them I don't know, I need to practice that more, like, I know a good amount of them, um, but it's really, like, if you can learn that first and then go into learning kanji, man, it's, this is gonna save you time, but I'm stubborn and, uh, so I've been, I do, and I'm ha- uh, half on and half off. I, I think the problem is they're like, there's not like an app that has them, um, I think Japanese Dictionary, um, which is a free app, uh, has them, but some of the, the way that they look is different, like dragon was not the dragon that I'm used to seeing. Um, so that might be one app that can help you if you're interested in that. Uh, and then the app's just called Japanese, it's on Android and, um, and on iOS, so. Alright, so sideways, oh, and you can see here, uh, it's also Yokohama, so Yokohama is like, uh, just below, uh, Tokyo. Uh, which is a popular city, really good, Yuki ramen. Um. So let's see, do the tree, and then we do the little grass, do the rice field and some fins. I don't know what kind of story I can tell myself, this, like, the tree fell sideways against the fl- flowers on the rice field. Um. And why are there fins? I don't know, I don't know why they're fins. Um. I, or I could say the, the person was swimming sideways in the pond of the rice field with flippers. Um. Surrounded by a field of flowers and trees. So, I don't know, it's kind of a nice little, I think I can do that. You got, you know, just an awkward guy swimming sideways. Sideways, and then I can also like read it, like yokoh, so yokoh. So each one, I might try to like say something while I'm doing it, like. Sideways. Fins, yokoh, and then, oh, oh, right, oh. Tree. Alright, um, so I'll leap that one at that, and then the next one. Also, push. Find it also. Do you see it? There's it, there. There it is, also. So this one is, uh, hand, rice field on a stick. But you can change things too, you could say it's like a rice pop. Rice pop on a stick, I don't, I think it sounds kinda funny, so I like it. Uh, so this one's push. So I'll do push, and then like, oh, also, oh. That's it, that's it, oh. So. Um, and this one, also. So it's the ta, and then the rice field. Oh, can I do it that way? I can't, alright. Um, and then also, like, if you click in here, you can see it this way, and you see how this is four, um, four cells, that's also why on the grid people, paper, I'm doing it with the four cells. Um. So. Oh, see, I think I, yeah, line, yeah, don't get into these bad habits. Once you get into them, it's hard to get out of them. I don't like my line work here. Okay, then I can go with also. Shiki, shiki, okay, shiki, it's like. Shiki. Fifty, shiki. Alright, so shiki is ceremony. Style, style too, I, I don't remember it as a style. Okay, and then shiki. Okay, um, so here, it's cross. And then the little construction down below, little slide. So, cross, down, little third box, slide. And I think it needs the tail, yeah, when I was doing my, my studies in class, it's like they really want you to put the little tail, it's important. Okay, I get that one. Hold on, targets all up in my grower again. Okay, um. Jishin. Transmission confidence. So, can't get up there. You got scared? You got scared on screen? Sorry. Everybody's gonna think I hurt you. Oh, uh-oh, you got a buddy. Oh, there's a cat. The animal's coming in. You wanna help me study? Alright, everybody wants, uh, some attention, I guess. Right? And they're gone. And the cat miraculously didn't run off the computer. Um, okay, oh. Okay, let's see here. So, shi. I don't, so shi, transmission. Okay, where is she? Alright. Correspondent, faith, truth, faith. Who these animals are. Not wanting to leave me alone. Might need to bail out a little early today. Um, let's see, faith. Okay, so this is the little person, and then say. Alright, uh, this person. Long, small lines, square. I know this one, so, that's why I'm able to do this one a little faster. Um. But I'll do that for all of these, so everything, each one here, oh, I realize, sorry. So each one here, I'll do all of them, so it's eight, day, tobu, um, it's really nice, and then I kinda some of these I know. Some of them I don't, but I'll do that, and then I will study on this. Um, but, because I haven't put them in, like, I, I, I put them in, but I haven't gone through them. I don't think I'm ready to do this, and I, I think that's what happened yesterday too, right? Like, I did go back and, and do these. Um, but, yeah, it, uh, like, these ones are kinda hard, cause it's like, do you, you know, I need to sit there, really study them in the, in the flashcard app. Um, and then write them down, so ki- kinda what I did yesterday, like, even though it's like each day, I, I, in the morning, uh, like the rest, a little bit tonight, and then in the morning, I do some studying, and then, like, just before I start my day, um, I would leave the house, I'll, I'll do the questions here, and see, you know, if I got them, and then, uh, yeah, and then maybe at work, um, or like on my break, I'll prepare the, the, uh, flashcards. Or maybe I'll, I'll prepare them the night before, like last night, I think I prepared the kanji list. Uh, but I didn't prepare the vocabulary to this day. Um, so maybe before I go to sleep, I'll do them all, and, and I'd like to, to study them before I start here, so then I can kinda go through it with you, um, in these, cause like the vocabulary one was a little hard, uh, that I did it that way, um, but yeah, so day two, accountability there, I think I'm, I'm kind of you know, a little bit behind, like, cause I need to practice these, uh, words, and it's really gonna catch up. Uh, tomorrow is probably gonna be quite difficult. So I'll be studying probably a lot in the morning, um, and I'll, I'll try to time that, give, give the timing, and then I'll, uh, you know, the, the grammar point that was really hard for me today, um, I'll talk to somebody about this and, and find out, you know, wh- what it is I need to know, like, wh- cause there's something, it's probably something that I should have learned, um, before this book, like it's old grammar points that I just, you know, I need a refresher on. Um, but this one was quite frustrating, uh, because I didn't know, but, uh, I'm not gonna get caught up on that, I'm gonna go, and then like I said, um, I will practice it again with this. Um, like I said, I'm pretty forgetful, so it probably is gonna take me a couple times before I remember, like, I'm not gonna remember the, the, the sequence. And, and I can go back and do it later, and then hopefully, uh, something about that also gets tested on the seventh day, right? Cause we have all these questions on the seventh day, and, uh, hopefully, something is in there. Um, so if, uh, you're following along, you know, if there's something that, uh, you'd like me to do or change up, let me know. Um, you know, if we, if more people start to show up, then, you know, uh, maybe the sessions will be longer, and, and it will be more studying with people. Um, uh, but the, you know, accountability is the most important, failing's important, um, and not getting discouraged. And, uh, if I need help, you know, I'll, uh, start finding other solutions, if I can't find answers, and I'll, and I'll share how I do those. Um, I was also thinking of, for some grammar points, if I, if they become difficult, that I might do some reaction videos to YouTubers that explain the, uh, I think that would be kinda fun, and I did a search, and nobody's done that. Um, but, uh, yeah, it'd be interesting to kind of, like, my reaction, what am I learning, and then anybody else could kinda jump in on there. Uh, so if you like this series, if you like what I'm sharing, uh, please subscribe. Um, you know, give me a thumbs up if you liked it, thumbs down if you hated it. And, uh, if you want notifications from when I go live again, hit the bell icon. I'll try to get a schedule set up, uh, but right now, this is all really new to me, and I'm trying to figure out what the best, uh, schedule is, so. Uh, I had a lot of fun doing this, uh, I hope you enjoyed watching, so, see you next time.